Call this meeting to order. Special called meeting. Determined to call in present Commissioner Wardlaw, Commissioner Vasquez, Commissioner Nettleton, Commissioner Fuentes and myself. We have a call in. Commissioner Fuentes. Can we get up a little bit, please?
We're ready. A prayer that we give to the side of the United States of America and to the political which stands one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the unity and justice for all.
I'm purple there. Real quick, yesterday we were in a meeting, the sheriff and myself, and it was alarming of what we were told yesterday. The 2019, we had a crisis and we had immigrants that were coming across in 2019. At that point, I think that we might have had a couple of days that were in the 100 and 25, 150, and Roland, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had just very few days that we hit the 100 and 25, 150. Was it manageable for the NGO? It was rough, you know, but they were able to take care of it, but there wasn't that many days with that many people coming through, even though we did have the 50 and 75 days, or 50 and 75 people that had come across and were released. Yesterday, we were told that the day before that they had apprehended over 450 in our sector, not in Del Rio, but in our sector. Out of that, there's probably about 200 that were here that would be released or could be released in, at the station area in Del Rio. Our NGO, for that amount of people, or for anything, I would say over 75, is probably not able to handle that. In 2019, we had three transportation companies that were able to get these individuals out of Valverde County into Houston, or Dallas and into San Antonio to get them to other colleges where they would be able to be transported, especially to their point of destination. But we don't have that right now. So, one of the things that we were facing right now is if they release the amount of people that they're saying they're going to release, which would be in that 100, 100 or more per day, just because of the amount of people that are there, there is no place right now for them to go. And we'll hear from Roland and Father Heim and stuff, there's other plans out there that might work, but at some point, I think we are fixing to hit a wall as a county. I know that Valeria from Eagle Pass, I was on the phone with her this morning, Roland's been visiting with Son, and what we have in place right now with individuals that they are beginning, or they will begin to release, we don't have the capability to take care of. So, I wanted the court to hear this and make sure that if we need to set aside some money or something in order to help the city, one of the things that we talked about yesterday was maybe trying to get these individuals to San Antonio to a bigger hub. That way, they could get more help at another facility or another town. What I was told yesterday too, is that we don't have, I guess, the designation as a mobility or whatever, like what the city has. So therefore, at that point, it would be harder for us to go by buses or do anything in that way, but we could probably partner with the city because they have that designation if we were to have to move masses of people out of our community to get them to another community that they were able to get help at because of NGOs and other communities. Roland, if you want to come up and maybe give us a breakdown on what you've heard from Son and everybody else. You know, the sort of, the main reason I called this meeting is that this could get serious in a hurry, and I just wanted y'all to hear it in case we have to go do something or spend some funds in order to move these people out of our community to get them to a place where they can actually get help.
Sure.
And again, I'm not throwing rocks at the NGOs here, it's just I think it's going to be overwhelming.
Sure. Well, good afternoon, Judge Jones and Commissioners Court and the rest of staff. Essentially, in light of COVID, the border humanitarian coalition, which is the group that had been spearheading a lot of the immigrant transitioning and whatnot, in light of COVID, you know, they've seen a kind of lower participation on volunteers to help. And this is a nonprofit, no one's getting paid for the effort. You know, they can easily manage 30 or 40 releases. The problem is obviously the overnight accommodations. We've talked to the Salvation Army, Samaritan's Purse, Samaritan's Purse played a huge role in helping with the transitioning and feeding and helping out with the over operation. Samaritan's Purse, at the moment, we talked to Shannon David, who was the original person that we contacted with last time around, who worked the center, says that at this point, you know, they're not going to mobilize. Salvation Army, in a lot of the weather as well, we spoke before, the weather freeze incident here in town, and they were definitely willing to come and assist with at least providing a mobile kitchen. And talking to Ivan McGeeas, who is the basically the text director for emergency efforts, says that they are willing to come down and assist. And I told him about this meeting and I told him that, you know, whatever decision the court made, we've been back in contact with them to assist. Again, back to the point that Judge Jones made, it is an issue on transportation and the amount of companies that do transport. Pastor Sean Young says that they may have not been able to contact a bus company to help move folks over to San Antonio, but because there's not a transit center anymore that's operating as before two years ago in San Antonio, they'd essentially be bussing into the bus station and not have a, you know, kind of a humanitarian perspective on getting these folks to a center where they can, you know, make arrangements to travel. And essentially what's happening here, and Sean can speak to these details better, he was going to try to make it, and I just sent him a message as a reminder, but basically, these folks, you know, many of them are able to get out that same day when the bus service is running. They do have, they do have a place where they're going, and so very few have been staying overnight, but within, we haven't seen the numbers into the hundreds. It's been 40, 50, I think the last big census they had was at 75 on Monday night.
But the thing is though, Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we were told yesterday that they could, because of the policy changes that are in place right now, we have more and more individuals that are coming. And because of that, we will see an uptick on individuals that are going to be coming, apprehended and released. And we were told yesterday that those numbers could be above 125, 100, 125 every day once this hits. And as you just heard, they were able to, the 30s and the 40s don't really hurt, you know, the NGOs can do it, but anything after that, they're really not going to be able to take care of.
Because of spacing, as well as the areas, some of the COVID protocols, the space is an issue, and the amount that they're getting, most of them are family units, if not all, but there are exceptions. So, you know, being able to contain families in those groups is easier, but when you start getting individuals that are not part of family units, then that's a concern. We did receive a letter from Judge Owens that State Representative Rimola sent regarding rapid testing for individuals that have been released. It's a voluntary program. Tests are available through TDM. There are a few tests available now. The city also has about 1,000 tests, but again, we're looking at a situation where these individuals do test positive and they have, we have to make a decision through the local authority on whether they stay for 14 days on quarantining, and so we open up that.
Where would we quarantine? That's another problem. You know, because the odds are some of these are going to test positive.
Correct.
And we have, right now, and again, Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have a young, a mom and a daughter, right now, that has chicken pox. Is that correct?
Yeah.
There is a case of chicken pox. Right now, I mean, there's just, I'm trying to pick the right words here.
Variables.
Yeah, the other words that I'm going to offend is everybody, especially the Father Heim that's in here. But there's more and more third world country stuff that we haven't seen that's coming in. I guess that's about as clean as I can get it.
Where are they coming from? Where, what nationality, what?
Haitians?
These are Haitians, the majority of them.
Are we, is that some of the areas we're seeing those variances in strength of COVID down in, was it Brazil, down in that area?
Well, most of the Haitians have been in Mexico.
If I can answer that question better than y'all.
These folks, the Haitians have been in Mexico for at least a year, they're going to have, so it's not necessarily.
They're not necessarily from their native house over right now.
Correct. As far as the Cubans, I can't speak for them.
Judge, going back, finding a way to move them out. Is there any possible way that Dr. Rios will lend us some of the school buses since they're not being used?
We, what we did is we entered in, we looked at an MOU to use some of the buses, and that's an option. I just, I need direction from the court, or it's like everything else, everybody, every time somebody says, "Well, what do you need? We need help. What do you need? We need money." There has to be, there's going to have to be a system. If all this fails, Commissioner, if the NGOs can't take care of it, again, I'm not throwing rocks at them, and they've done a really good job. I don't want Son to send a text or something.
He's on his way, so.
Okay. So, ain't throwing rocks while he's here. They've done a really good job. I mean, they really have, you know, visiting with Father Heim earlier, you know, they're looking for a facility for them now. They need to get approval from the archdiocese in order to be able to help with this. But if all that fails, we will have to come up with another plan. And that's what I'm asking for today is, you know, we don't have the capability or not, I shouldn't say capability, we wouldn't not have the authority to transport them ourselves, all right?
They have to contract it out.
Well, I think the city has the authority. I think because they already have whatever mobility authority, whatever that is, transporting already people, like to San Antonio and stuff, within that, they would have the authority to move them. But I don't think it's right that if the decision's made to move them, that they bear all the burden of this. And that's where I, right now.
And a certain percentage of their fleet can only be accounted for individuals who are not mobility impaired. So, that's another issue. That, so they say they have 10 units, say eight of those 10 units have to be used for mobility impairment individuals, so.
And we talked about, part of the thing that we just, Commissioner Fuentes just said is we visited on getting more units.
Right.
Okay. And at that point, then the eight units or 10 units would have to be for wheelchair individuals, and we're not digging into their, digging into their regular schedule.
Right. I think they would have to amend their contract through the state to allow to serve a greater population, so.
But it would be easier for them to do it than for us, because we'd have to get started.
Right.
But they're not going to be able to. If it's private, they can charge the individual for the bus trip.
Mm-hmm.
But if we do it, or the city does it, I don't think we have the authority to charge.
The city charges right now everybody that they take to San Antonio.
Okay.
Yeah.
It ain't a big fee, but it is a charging.
How are these people financially? Do they have any?
The majority of them have money, and they have, you know, they have the means to make arrangements to travel, it's just.
The majority of them?
Yes, sir. Majority of them do.
No, in 2019, I mean, you had people showing up with thousands of people.
Oh, yeah, they had the money to, it was just a little on.
Hey, guys.
How's it going? You doing all right?
Yeah. All good today, all good today. So far, so good today.
Really? Not that bad?
Like 20 and something.
Okay.
I don't know if that means like a late night, late day surprise, but.
A tiger wave?
Yeah.
Were we housing any of them at Chihuahua position, you said?
Once again?
Are we housing any of the asylum seekers?
We have not, yet.
I've seen some movement there.
No, they're coming in, they're able to get them out.
Like overnight? We have not overnighted anybody there, yet.
You know, if they start releasing 75, 100, 150, then we're going to have them.
Well, I know like just on Greyhound itself, that's only 75 seats that's available.
Are they willing to take them?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
And the big buses been running, because I saw it come in today.
Came in today.
Yeah.
Came in today.
So, it'd be a housing issue of being able to house them while they're waiting on another buses.
Yeah.
And you could do, probably, I guess, the max would be 70 car a day in a car Greyhound.
Yeah, but I have a friend coming in tomorrow from Laredo that has good ties, he did the immigration thing for the last several years in Laredo. He's coming up tomorrow to get me hooked up with a charter bus system, a van system that will come to Del Rio, and they'll book people, and I don't have to book people, they'll do it for me, and hopefully we can just keep that rotation and just go.
What about y'all's resources when we start getting these larger crowds, if we start getting them? What kind of help are y'all in, or what do we need to do, or what needs to happen, I guess? I mean, it would appear to me we have to have some kind of housing, and then we got to feed them, and then there's a whole list of other things that probably have to.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, you know, obviously, the top of the list is just getting them transported out, and then, you know, obviously, just from there, it just falls into, you know, the top of the list after that would be feeding them, and then, you know, we worked our list, or work our way down the list as time, as the time that we have.
If they're released in the morning, if they get a hold of them in the morning, then they have all day to process. The ones that are released late in the afternoon are the ones that, there's no place to go with them.
Yeah, like, you know, if it comes, it comes 4 o'clock, 4:30, and they drop off 30 or 40 of them, you know, pretty much 30 or 40 are going to stay the night.
Yeah.
What kind of capacity y'all have for the people that do stay? How many people?
We haven't, we haven't placed cots, we haven't spaced them or placed them, because right now, we have some, we have to get some of that storage that we had. Thank you, guys, for approving the funds for the storage containers in the back. So, we need to get some of the stuff out of that overnight housing and into that storage container, and then we can start placing cots and kind of, you know, at the civic center, when we housed overnight there, that one night, we placed them, you know, socially distanced, and they just pulled them up according to family units, so.
Do you have enough cots?
Yeah, we got enough cots, we got enough.
And they've got cots, they've got quilts. When I was at the civic center yesterday, the cots and just a bunch of quilts are still there.
Yeah.
And so, that stuff can be moved. Like you said, right now, the containers that the county bought, they're there.
Yes.
And what we need to move, everything that we have in the office facility in there to make room for more cots.
Yeah, and it's just the manpower that we, we don't have the manpower to, when we're like processing people, it's like, you know, that's the only thing we concentrate on.
And how are y'all doing with the COVID issue, anything?
I mean, we're just, we're masking up, we're double masking, depending on who it is, and we have masks on site, and we have obviously signs saying to wear masks and all those things, and.
And then Roland, that rapid testing thing would go to them?
Yes.
To that location? If we can get it?
Yes.
Where you could test on site quickly and get at least.
As long as you have a place for somebody to go and test positive.
Yeah, therein lies the issue, that what you do quarantine, because you're not going to put them on a bus, and you're not leaving Del Rio for however long that takes.
Yeah, after that, it's out of my hands. I mean, I don't, definitely don't even have one bit of resource for that. So, I don't know, that's like a devil's, that's like a devil's advocate thing for me.
No, no, no.
Well, we don't have a resource for it either, that's it, I mean, you know, it's.
I mean, maybe you can, I don't know if there's a way to strike a deal with Verbeto, you can rapid test them there, if they're positive, you just keep them right there.
If they can keep them.
What we had, what we did have is that one of them did talk positive, and we were sort of scrambling there for a little bit, and then Verbeto kept them, right? We did have one talk positive, and going to get a room, going to do this, going to do that, we're going to release them from the hospital, we're going to release them from the hospital, and that all took about, what, about an hour and a half, and all of a sudden Verbeto says we're keeping them. So, that was, but we don't know if that's still an option, because they had not. They were going to release them, did release them, and I think just like with this chicken pox, they still have them.
Yeah, we got those this morning.
Y'all got them this morning?
Yeah.
So, I thought they were keeping them.
They've been keeping them since.
For 10 days or whatever.
Yeah, we were supposed to get them like the tail end of last week or something.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Sheriff?
If one talks positive, and one individual becomes positive, and he's in the group of 20, and I mean, that's just isolating, hey, you got a 14, you does 20 also, just for thought.
Yeah.
Now, we're looking at 40 years of this, at least?
What?
40 years of this that we're going to build it?
Well, I don't know, I mean, today, I think.
Seems to be the policy.
I actually filed another suit, I think won that one, so we don't even know where that one's going to trickle to, or when we're going to get sort of an offset or offshoot of that, what happened yesterday.
Do we have the ability to join those suits?
You know, we could, but that one's already been won, so, you know.
Well, it didn't stop them, they were going to win it, so.
No, I did. I guess my deal is we join it. We win and say all right, what we accomplished. Again, I mean, I think a couple of deals is, we need to get transportation, and the three companies that were here before, we couldn't get either one of the three to do it. They didn't want any part of it. We, I contacted a couple of companies in San Antonio, and they said, "Look, we're just not going to do it."
Yeah.
So, that's five so far that we contacted. You've got one that might be coming in tomorrow.
Yes.
Right?
They were, they were ready for today.
Okay. So, I guess, one of the things that we could, I guess, accomplish right now would be is, you need help to move that stuff out?
Yeah, please.
Could we get them help? And bottom line is just to move, chairs and tables?
Yeah, just get.
Out of the, can we, out of the.
Yeah, out of that, out of the.
Out of the building, just to be able to move them into the containers that the county already bought.
Yeah.
The containers are there?
Mm-hmm.
The containers are there. We just need help moving.
That'd be big.
You know, I don't know, it wouldn't take too many people, but we could do building maintenance, maybe just get them in there. Would that be okay? And then, none of y'all need to go, and building maintenance works on Fridays too. So, if y'all are okay with that, I'll get with building maintenance and try to get your crew over there in the morning, try to get that stuff moved, that way you have enough place to house, or that, at least, whatever you can house, you've got the room.
Yes.
Right? Father Heim, do you think you'll, when do you think you would know something if another facility might be available, Father?
Well, I just talked to the Archbishop before, Tony, and to his CFO, we're there, and they say that it's very possible that they could, we will need to.
Something.
Get an agreement or something.
An MOU.
And make sure the insurance, the insurance also.
Okay. So, I guess if, once you figure out that if they say yes, then we can put all other pieces in place.
Yeah, so, yes, if you're interested in having.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I guess my biggest concern is, is that, and I don't want to offend you, because I know you're on humanitarian or whatever, and you're trying to.
I'm a pastor.
Okay. Again, so I know what, you know, you're trying to help.
Yeah.
So, I've been telling Roland, I don't want to make you mad.
No, no, go for it.
Because I mean, I don't know.
Take, don't hurt my feelings.
What we, what we would do without you, okay? Since 2019 and in 2019, I don't know what we'd do without you. But I'm sitting in a little bit different position than both of y'all. And again, I'm not trying to offend, but at some point, if we can't house them, then I need to get them to a spot that they can go get more help. Okay? So, I guess we work on, once you give us the okay, then we can figure out, you know, what type of issues.
Stuff to, for the paperwork and all that.
What you can do is get with me, and then we'll get with Son, and we'll all sit down and try to figure it out. Of course, we'll need to get David involved, but once you, once you come up with a yes or no.
Sure.
What I'll do right now is try to get authority from the Commissioners Court to be able to deal with that and move forward with David, you know, and see what, you know, what we need to do. I think at the bare minimum, if, we might need to set aside, you know, $10,000, $15,000 in case we need to go spend something, I don't need to come back to you within the next week or two weeks, you know, not a, not a big dollar amount, but if we need to go spend something towards this.
I think an important note to take into consideration is that the coalition doesn't have insurance as a shelter, it just as a transit of making accommodations for individuals, so that liability was falling on the city. So, when they ask the question, how many can they keep overnight, the coalition in fact is not responsible for the overnighters, it was the city. So, the insurance on that would, I mean, that's something that Sean and Fuentes and I have.
Yeah, I missed the earlier conversation, so I don't know where we guys are at.
Then that might, then that might be something, David, I mean, if, if, we don't want to have the liability either, but could we pay for insurance? Because this is a health risk, especially with the COVID, so could we help pay for the insurance for somebody else? That way, they're insured. Question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Judge, another thing, well, this facility has not been used in years, so technically, I don't know.
What it, what it looks like.
And I just took over that parish in May, but it's a big property, it has a lot of green ground outside, so tents, showers.
Let's do this part, if y'all will, once you give us the okay, and maybe between now and then, maybe we'll just go take a look at the facility and check and see if you do give us the okay, we have a plan in order to which to open.
So, that would be like an overnight over there?
And we will also need, I mean, I'm offering the property, but I personally, with my, with my reduced staff, could not run it like Sean does.
Yeah.
So, do we have another organization that will be willing to, I mean, we could give some support from Catholic charities in San Antonio, from our volunteers in the church.
And that was, you know, I guess that's a conversation, and, you know, we want to look at everything, but at the end of the day, if we can't open this facility safely, then the option would be to move them.
Yeah.
Right? To get them out of town, which, which that is the number one objective to begin with. But the individuals that are here at night, you know, if we can't house them, then we're going to have to move them. Right? So, that's the concern is, is that, you know, if, if all this fails, or we can't get the pieces to fall in place, then, you know, can we partner with the city to get these individuals moved to San Antonio? I mean, that, that's just point blank. I know we've had concerns from, you know, Commissioners or Commissioners that, you know, about spending county tax dollars for this problem, you know, and the people that are out there, because we'll have the text messages here in a minute, why are we looking at this? Well, the reason we're looking at this, because if you start putting 125 people out in this, you know, into our community, and we can't get them moved, you know, before the end of the week, we could have 1,000 to 1,700 people that, in reality, we won't ever take care of.
They'll be wandering all over the place, right?
Well, it just takes one day.
Yeah.
It just takes one day.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, if we could get them to San Antonio, we know, even though the doors are not open up there like they used to be, but they have more help than what we could offer them here, especially when you start having 15, 1700 people a week.
I like the idea of, I mean, bringing in the company tomorrow and feeling them out, because they're going to have to pay for it. And obviously, I don't want to, I don't want us to have to create this system of enablement where they know they're going to get them.
And I guess I need to use that word versus the words that I.
Because, because then you're just going to get more, and then you might as well just add on an extra bus line, an extra, you know.
No, and.
Hopefully, if something worked out, they'll do it for us, and then that'll resolve the problem. My bigger concern is, is how are we going to deal with the quarantine issue when we have that issue arise? Because they're going to be in packs of people, you know, it's not just one person, as you said, there's going to be several that's probably going to be in that group, and we're going to have to deal with a quarantine issue for at least 14 days, and then if they do get sick, then we got all of those costs to go with it, and all the other issues that happen if they wind up in a hospital, or medications, and you got to feed them, and then there's all kinds of issues that we're going to have to deal with there.
If this bus line comes in, or this van line comes in, I would imagine if it's running proficiently like, you know, we had it, you know, somewhere in 2019, they're not going to, a lot of them won't even be here two hours to wait for that result. they're not gonna, a lot of them won't even be here two hours to wait for that result.
And I'm okay with that. But if.
Well, when they rapid test, they don't do that. They have to, they have to stay quarantined after they test regardless of their positive. They're not upending their, ending their status.
Well, maybe if you can get them in and out of here in two hours.
Well, just them in San Antonio. As they get there.
One. So you're gonna try, you're gonna, we'll, we'll get you help for the, to move, to move out. That way you have a place to have more, have people in case they need to stay. Father Heinrich, if you'll give us an idea of when?
Sure.
Uh, if that's possible between now and then, maybe just go take a look either Friday, Saturday, if you get a chance. I know Sunday's a busy day for you. Okay, and then, uh, the, if you'll visit with that, that van, that bus line, they're coming in tomorrow, so you, you're trying to take care of that. And then, you know, we'll just, we'll wait and see. We've got another meeting on Wednesday, another commissioner's court meeting. We'll put something on there. Tom, if you don't mind, just make sure that there's something on there so we can visit about this to see what we're doing. Uh, what else, son?
Judge, um, Catholic charity is also offering today the possibility I have in a plan and I believe that they consider full-time, uh, never lending to, to the parish. I, I need to figure out, I mean, how will I afford, uh, drivers, to drivers or whatever. But their only concern was the COVID and their state's regulations are very strict. So they have concerns of, well, you can fit fifteen, you can have five or six. But if we have the rapid testing available and this person's, uh, tested negative, we could have.
More.
A vehicle available just for that.
Okay.
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 I guess, yeah, I mean, obviously all the safety stuff is great. I love it. But also if the object is to, to move quickly, have to have some liberties to move quickly.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I can't have too many things bogging.
Yeah.
The system down. Because we don't, we don't have time, we don't have time to afford.
The, the key to this is going to be to get somebody to transport.
Yeah.
Right?
And you'll know that tomorrow or next day, right?
Yeah.
Then we can have that discussion.
Yeah, the problem is.
If it doesn't work, we can have that discussion on Wednesday about our second, third option, fifth and sixth option.
The problem is today, I mean, they said, you know, verbicule yesterday, it made it sound like, you know.
Oh, that they're gonna release a hundred and twenty-five per day starting today?
Yeah.
Or yesterday?
So I got twenty today. Now I have this van company, you know, hey, what happened?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand that, I mean, is it, is it true what they're gonna say? I mean, are they coming or they're not coming?
Well, yesterday was scary.
Yeah.
Yesterday, when, when I left there, uh, I was completely, you know, I, I needed, I'm formally commissioner that we're gonna have a hundred and twenty-five per day because that's pretty much what we were told, right? And starting now.
And that could still happen. It's still gonna happen, um, but, I mean, I was kind of under the impression a couple of weeks ago that we were gonna start, you know, getting quite a few. And, you know, it's hard to do this roller coaster thing where you're like, you know, we're not the military. We can't hurry up and wait.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, you know, I, I just wanted the court to hear what was going on because yesterday when we got done, uh, you know, the amount of people that they were talking about, you know, he said, you know, when I came into work this morning, I already had two hundred and some more, two hundred and sixty some odd more detained this morning, you know, here, so plus another four hundred, another two hundred yes, today that were, yesterday we're gonna have to, to release. You know, I mean, and then when the question was asked, how many could we go to? He said, we're probably talking about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five per day. You know, and when we talked, uh, you know, thirty, forty, maybe seventy-five that you could house, you know, but you can't do that every night, you know, because you're gonna have some stragglers that are not gonna be able to get out once you get that many people, you know, so that number would fly. So where are we gonna put them? You know, and the discussion I had with Matt earlier also was, uh, you know, again, you know, we, we wanna take care of them, but, but we'd like to take care of them somewhere else, uh, if I can't, if we can't take care of them here, right? So that was a discussion that we were having yesterday because yesterday we were told that, you know, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five per day. You know, and like you said, they were thirty or, or whatever.
Now, they're coming across are the ones that were asylum seekers in Mexico that, that Trump had made stay in Mexico. Now they're coming across.
Those and then, and then what we heard yesterday is Title forty-two, correct me on my numbers, but Title forty-two, if that goes away, which is, is only extended one more week, which should go away this next week, is what we were told yesterday. If that goes away, uh, you will see in influx of quite a few more people than just regular.
And a lot of people, I mean, there is quite a few people that were, you know, in country waiting. But I even talked to a family yesterday that basically just flew into Mexico City just recently and, and made their way up here. So, I mean, there are some people that have the ability to move quickly to the border.
And, and that's what was said yesterday if.
And I assume that's not federal help from this disaster.
All right, yeah, on a, on a reimbursement program, only the emergency food and shelter program, but that's on a reimbursement basis for food and shelter only.
Lots of star.
And we're, we're still working, waiting on a check, right?
Uh, it was supposed, I got another notice the other day that it was supposed to be deposited, so.
Um, because we, we sort of texted and emailed everybody when you sent it.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then he's still waiting on a check from twenty nineteen.
Yeah, I'm still waiting on a fee of government check from twenty nineteen. I say, you're doing good.
So we've got a plan. I, I guess we just wait till Wednesday, uh, and see what happens and then soon you get back with us and I'll get back with the court. Son, Father Heinrich, if you'll come on. I will tell you that yesterday when we got off, when we got out of the meeting, uh, I was gonna say that I was panicking, but there was, uh, I was panicking. Yeah, yeah.
Well, if you start doing a hundred and twenty-five a day, I don't know what I'm gonna do.
The thing is, is we need to start planning for this long term because we're gonna be dealing with this for a long time. So whether it happens on this round or the next round, we need to have a plan in place of how we're gonna deal with these issues long term. Because we're gonna be dealing with this for at least the next forty years.
Yeah, I'd like to jump three steps ahead.
Yeah.
I mean.
So we, we, we need to look at facilities to quarantine for COVID. We need to look at issues on how to bus. We need to look at issues on housing. And we need to look at issues on how we're gonna feed the people that need to be fed while we're moving them around. Or if we wind up with a group of twenty and one comes positive and all twenty's quarantined, we gotta feed them for fourteen bits. And, and that's not an easy task when they're testing positive. And it's not like they can cook their own food or anything like that. So, I mean, we need to start looking long term about how we're gonna deal with this issue ongoing and see if there is any federal way to get some assistance to help in food trucks or whatever the case might be. I mean, the National Guard, Army, I don't know what it is, but we need to have a long range plan because we're gonna deal with this for the next forty years. And that's, that, that's this administration's policy and it is what it is. And unfortunately, the local taxpayers are gonna get stuck picking up the tab to, to deal with Washington's nightmare.
And we did send out an email yesterday explaining to them that they needed to own it, not us, but that's, you know, between that and.
Well, the reality is, is that they're, they're not gonna own it. They're not gonna do anything, but we have to protect our communities and that, that's just the reality of what we have to do. And I don't like it. I'm, like the rest of commissioners, I hate the thought of having to spend one single penny of taxpayer's dollars on this. But I also hate the reality that we may wind up with hundreds and hundreds of people roaming our streets and the consequences that goes with that. So I think we better start planning some long-term systems so that we're prepared for when and whatever comes next. And I think that's part of a bigger conversation. We're all gonna have to sit down and figure out how we're gonna do that. Because it may get to the point where they're, they can't handle.
Well, that's what scares me. That's like when we're having this meeting, it's like, you know, I, I think if they hold true to the hundred and twenty-five, it's gonna take a couple of days already at that point. If they start releasing a hundred and twenty-five a day.
When it's a policy changes and these lawsuits don't work and they decide to open the gates, you could be dealing with that.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll wait. Father Heinrich, I'm waiting on you and I know I'm repeating myself, son, if you'll let us know what happens, I'll get back to the court with every, with your information. Uh, we'll get you moved tomorrow. We'll get everything moved. If you'll have somebody there in the morning, say eight-thirty. And we'll get everything moved into the containers, uh, stuff like that. Again, if you need PPE or whatever, we have some, uh, be able to help you with that. Uh, I guess we'll just wait till Wednesday. Y'all okay?
Could, could we not purchase buses and then develop an MOU with the, the coalition?
What I, what I did right now is Matt was on, Matt, Matt, Matt is texting me. What I told Matt right now is that I would get back with him because they're supposed to visit somewhat about tonight. They've got, I think, a council meeting, so all this is coming together.
Uh, we was waiting to see if he can get something put together with a private company before we start talking about buying buses.
It's not my fault, but I think it's, it's a good idea to get one set ahead just in case.
Well, we've got an MOU with the school, uh, for some of their buses. I'm gonna look at that MOU again right now. Again, we wouldn't have the ability to transport with the city, would? So we, we need to do an MOU with, uh, with the city. Uh, do I need authority from the commissioner's court? Don't you? Huh? Okay.
I link a motion to allow the judge to negotiate an MOU with the school district for the use of buses.
Second, could you make that also with the city?
In the city, in the city.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
I draw a vote. We good? That work? Okay, anything else? Hold on. Matt? Father Heinrich? We're good? Son?
I'll, I'll roll with that, Judge.
Okay. Sheriff, anybody else? Anything else that you think we might need to cover?
Kid real quick, not having to do with this, but just to give you, there's, uh, I've been in communication with the National Church Association with, uh, dealing with, uh, their executive director, Jonathan Thompson, and a couple of other sheriffs along the border that are facing some of the same issues. Uh, and we're trying to get a push from that side of it on, uh, using the pandemic because all these people are not staying here. They're going to New York, New York City, Miami, Florida, those locations. Uh, so they're, they're trying to make a push of this administration. Uh, this, the, this administration is, they're working on a policy. Instead of keeping what they had, they threw it out the window and they're working on a policy. Uh.
And they're working on a policy for twenty years.
Well, yeah, that's what I thought. But the, the, the plan is that they're, they're having is that they're, they're hoping that in ninety days, they're gonna have a policy. And our, and our thinking is we're gonna, you know, six to eight months down the road that they'll have some kind of policy that'll be put into effect. So, you know, we're, we're dealing with this, uh, and yet the judge didn't mention, but, uh, the chief yesterday, uh, Skuro mentioned that, you know, they project within the next sixty days, probably releasing up to thirty-five thousand individuals a month in this sector. Uh, so that's, that's a huge number that this community could not support, could not support that.
Well, I hold no faith in Washington coming up with a policy, so we're gonna have to deal with. I think the policy is, they're all gonna sit down and let Biden do a bunch of executive orders and do whatever they're gonna do. That's gonna be the policy.
Well, that's.
We've been doing immigration for as long as I've been alive and we fixed it yet.
I just got a text. Warmer weather, they will start migrating in larger numbers. Right? Thank you. Appreciate that, Roland. Uh, yeah. So the number that Sheriff just threw out, uh, I think that's one of the ones that just really scared me yesterday. Uh, so didn't really wanna throw it out right now. I figured we'd get ahold of them later.
That's the size of our town.
Huh?
That's the size of our town. You're talking about releasing a whole nother town.
In a month.
In a month.
Yeah, 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 so, but either way. Okay, now y'all know that I'm really freaking out. All right, anything else? We're good? Everybody good? David? You ready to come? Maybe. Sheriff, you wanna come scare the hell out of us again?
I just wanna get everybody on the same boat.
Oh, we're all on the same boat now, yeah.
Yeah, same boat sinking.
Father Heinrich, thank you so much for coming. Thank you so much for any help that you can assist us and what you've done. Sean, thank you, sir, so much. For your efforts also.
God will help with this, right?
We're gonna go light candles. Right on. So. One, uh, nothing else? This meeting is adjourned, Stephen?